Good evening and welcome. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everyone, once again, and welcome. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube, as well as Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. For those of you that are in the audience this evening, you might notice there's an additional television camera this evening. I just want to point out, we have a practice of noting anyone that's recording the proceedings, and we have a film crew here this evening that's been conducting a documentary on city politics and city hall operations generally over the last year. This is their second visit to the proceedings here. So, welcome back, gentlemen, and thank you, and we won't acknowledge you again. We have interpretation services available this evening in Spanish. The Spanish interpreter is here in the back. Will you please introduce yourself? Thank you. If you'd like to sign up for public comment this evening, you can please see our staffers and Ms. Lena Parvex in the hallway. Sign up for both public comment periods will end at 6:30 PM this evening. So, we'd like to begin tonight on a high note. We're going to be convening shortly with my colleagues down on the floor to give a special presentation to two very special BPS employees, and so I'd like to invite my colleagues to join me down there on the floor just now. Okay, so each year, the Boston Municipal Research Bureau honors a handful of city employees, about a dozen employees across the city and all departments, for years of service through the Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award. And the award recognizes those public servants who exemplify integrity, initiative, leadership, and commitment to the public good. So, we're delighted tonight to honor two of those employees through Boston Public Schools service, and we have with us Jen Stadola and Matt Blackburn, who's just joining the Boston Municipal Research Bureau this week. It's his third day on the job, so, you know, they wanted to break him in the right way and send him to the school committee. Jen and Matt, why don't you join us up here as well as we honor our two employees? So, the two employees that we have, I'm going to go in order. So, let me first congratulate Ms. Jocelyn Abijadi. Close? Tried. Why don't you come on up and join us? Ms. Abijadi is a nurse at the Boston Arts Academy, and she has with her her two daughters this evening. One is a 10th grader of BLS, and another one's a future teacher in her, is it second year at Emmanuel? Yeah. So, we're very happy to keep them in the family. And you're a nurse at Boston Arts Academy, and how many years have you been with the district?
Twenty-two.
Excellent.
Thank you. Twenty-two years.
And very impressive you have a few of your nurse colleagues out this evening as well, so.
Thank you.
We greatly appreciate the service that nurses provide across the school. We've done a number of efforts. Made a number of efforts over the last couple of years with your colleagues in the Boston Teachers Union to expand access to nurses and social and emotional supports across the district with a goal of getting to one nurse in every school by the end of the 2021 school year. And so, you're obviously an example of that and the success that that brings to all of our students. So, I want to read for you the citation we're presenting, and I know you attended, as well as Mr. Lane, the dinner that the Shattuck Awards holds each year. Is it at the Seaport? Is that right? Yep. Happened about three weeks ago, sometime right after our last meeting, so I hope you enjoyed your evening. "The Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to you, a registered nurse at the Boston Arts Academy as a recipient of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau's 2019 Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award. You've continuously gone above and beyond to care for your students, providing wraparound care to support students medically, emotionally, physically, and mentally. You also promote health through education, engagement, and communication throughout BAA and the community." So, on behalf of the members of the Boston School Committee, we join with the superintendent, Ms. Brenda Casilius, Dr. Brenda Casilius, excuse me, in extending our appreciation for your commitment to nurturing, supporting, and motivating students, and wish you continue to succeed in your future endeavors. We'll take a picture after Mr. Lane joins us. Why don't you come on up here, Mr. Lane? Welcome again, Jeff. Now, I said to Jeff, Jeff's a member of our Facilities Department. How many years have you been with us?
Thirty years.
Thirty years. One of these years, the rest of us will catch up to you.
I keep going, though. That's the problem.
Well, I said to Mr. Lane, as we were speaking before the meeting, you know, we've been very impressed with the work of our Facilities Department over the last few years, in particular with all the work that they've done around promoting safe water supplies in our schools, as well as working very hard to keep our schools clean, keep our schools operating, doing the best that we can with the facilities that we have, and we owe that in no small measure to the work that you bring to us every day. So, we deeply appreciate that work. And, thank you. Mr. Lane, the Boston School Committee extends its congratulations to you, as well as an environmental specialist in the Boston Public Schools Facilities Management Department, and also as a recipient of the Henry L. Shattuck Public Service Award. Since 1989, I could have done that math, I suppose, you've been dedicating your career to providing Boston's 54,000 students with safe, healthy, and productive learning environments. You forged many key partnerships and created numerous programs that enabled the city to meet state, federal, and federal, excuse me, environmental health and safety regulations. You've also served as a mentor to dozens of college students who've worked in the Environmental Intern Program over the years. So, on behalf of my fellow members on the committee, we join with Superintendent Dr. Brenda Casilius in extending our appreciation to you for your unwavering commitment.
Thank you so much.
So, I did just want to ask Ms. Stadola to say a few quick words about the Municipal Research Bureau and the Shattuck Awards. I know there's some nominations coming up again soon.
For those who don't know me, my name is Jen Stadola, and I am the Operations Membership Manager for the Boston Municipal Research Bureau. The Research Bureau has been around since 1932, so quite a few years, if we do say so ourselves. Our standing is to focus on public policy and finances for the city of Boston, so that watchdog group to make sure that the city is fiscally sound. But, on behalf of the Research Bureau, just welcoming and congratulating the two Shattuck recipients from BPS as well, and yes, thank you, Chairman, for inviting us to say a few words. So, the Shattuck Awards were created in 1985, so we've had quite a few years that we've celebrated city employees for their exceptional service to the city. With the class this year, we have recognized 260 employees, and as the chairman said, we are opening nominations next year in March, and with the school being the largest department in the city, we definitely want to see those nominations come through. So, please be on the lookout. It's, we recognize across all different departments within the schools, nurses, environmental specialists, custodians, teachers, you know, assistant principals. It's, we recognize the wide gamut. So, please, if you know somebody that has gone above and beyond their normal job description, and you want them to be recognized and honored, please nominate them. Thank you very much for all the time.
Well, thank you. And I think we should take one more picture, and maybe if our nurse colleagues want to join us as well, we'd be happy to take a group picture with everyone.
Thank you. Good, good, good. Jeff, congratulations, Jeff. Nice to see you.
Thank you, thank you.
Actually, I would say that to my dad, and then he would say that he throws people a smile, and then he would step people. I never know what that one meant. The good ones over here.
Actually, before the meeting for a change, so you can take the whole bucket.
I am. Well, it's always great to hear the wonderful stories of our employees across our district. We have 10,000 of them, and, you know, as we've heard, we have hundreds that have been honored across the city over the years that the Shattuck Award has been awarded, and just to hear the work that so many, the important work that so many individuals in our district are doing on a year-to-year basis is very fulfilling for all of us. So, thank you once again. We'll move on now to the approval of the minutes from the October 16th School Committee meeting. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2019 meeting as presented. Thank you, Ms. Alava Dabla. That looks like a second from Ms. Robinson. Any discussion, excuse me, discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the motion by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion, the minutes are approved, excuse me. We'll move on now to the superintendent's report, and I present to you our.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody, for joining us this evening. I'd like to share a couple of highlights from the district in the past couple of weeks since we last met, and a few updates. But first, before I do that, I would like for us all to wish Mr. O'Neill a happy belated birthday.
Stop celebrating them.
And last week, it was just yesterday, last week I joined Mr. O'Neill and BPS staff at the Council of Great City Schools Annual Conference, where I got to meet some of my colleagues for the first time across the nation, so that was really wonderful, and Chief of Strategy and Equity Charles Grandson joined me, as well as Assistant Superintendent Cindy Nielsen, Colin Rose, and Priya Talini, who, they were in attendance and also presented on some of their equity work that they're doing, and the EL work that they're doing with special education and the cross collaboration that those two offices are doing. So, really good time. It was a great opportunity to engage and learn with my colleagues from across the country, and I attended presentations on facilities to achievement gaps, and also specific, really good recommendations on how we can better serve our students of color, our young men and women, and English learners, and then really interesting work on the academic side around ethnic studies. And so, I have a lot of really good pieces that we brought back as a team, and I look forward to continuing to talk about those as we continue to move forward in our strategic process. Also, then yesterday, you may have seen and heard that I participated in a panel discussion that City Council President Andrea Campbell put together on her June report that she released, "Action for Boston Children: A Plan for BPS's Future." I welcome this important discussion and thank her for her leadership, and also our fellow panelists that were there yesterday, Latoya Gale, Executive Director of Boston School Finder, Paul Revel, former Massachusetts Secretary of Education, and Amy O'Leary, Campaign Director of Early Strategies for All and Strategies for Children. And I want to thank all of them for making education a top priority. It's clear to me after this visit and all of my visits to the schools and the community meetings that I've been having, as well as this panel yesterday, that K-12 public education is one of, if not the most important topics that people are talking about in Boston, and so I'm just very excited about this discussion and the future discussions moving forward. On Saturday, October 19th, I joined Mayor Walsh, Chair LaCanto, and other city and BPS leaders for the ribbon cutting of the Elliott School. This was just an incredibly beautiful fall day to go out and celebrate this wonderful achievement for this community. This was a turnaround school that had 140 children in it, and it is just blossoming now, and just a great addition to the North End community. It demonstrates the power of what communities can do, and when they all get in there and do the work together and persevere. So, just wonderful innovative learning environments for our students. As you know, this was our second annual Massachusetts STEM Week, and so we celebrated the second annual Massachusetts STEM Week with multiple events, and we were over at Madison Park Campus, and we had a Career and STEM Expo there, which was absolutely fabulous. Also, we had, there was a lot going on these past couple of weeks. We had co-founder and 2001 Boston Latin Academy graduate Nathan Blacharsik, who made a $1 million donation to Boston Latin Academy. So, that was quite an event, and he was incredibly inspiring when he gave his comments to our students, and they had a ton of questions. So, that was really wonderful to see him interact with them and inspire our students to really think about technology and think about the career that they could have with programming and coding and startups, you know, and he encouraged them that if you fail, you keep persevering. So, it was really a great story, and it's also wonderful that he made a pitch to a $1 million match. So, that's until next June as well. So, if there are others who want to match that donation, we encourage you to match that donation, and so this is going to fund two new computer labs, STEM initiatives at the school, and hopefully raise a little bit more money for other initiatives that are going on at Boston Latin. The John O'Brien School held a celebration for their new computer lab funded by GE Foundation and Project Lead the Way. The $45,000 investment supported the brand-new computer lab consisting of 31 desktop computers to support the software used in computer science classes. And I want to thank the GE Foundation Executive Director and Chief Medical Officer David Bearish, newly-appointed Chief Academic Officer Andrea Zayas for joining and being there. And I also want to especially recognize Pepper, who greeted us at the door. If you don't know, Pepper is a robot that gets programmed by our students. I think I also talked about the week ending with the STEM Discovery Expo at the Reggie Lewis Center on Saturday, October 26th. It was a free event to all students and families with activities, student projects, local company exhibits, and more. Lots of wonderful partners out there. It was great to see all the amazing work of our career technical education students in subjects like biotech, environmental science, computer science, architecture and design, boating. We had utilities there. It was just an amazing opportunity to be able to have kids at this college and career internship fair. And it was also really convenient for our families to get to there, so thanks, everybody, to the academic team for coordinating the event, particularly our new Executive Director of STEM Programming, Beth Mooski, who is no stranger to the district, having previously worked at New Mission High School. having previously worked at New Mission High School. Our community tour update is that I have now visited 94 school, school visits to date. They have been so wonderful, and the principals, it's been wonderful to talk to the students, to hear their points of pride. It's, the, the youth have just been incredible tour guides for me, and it's brought me a lot of joy. And also, the principals and the teachers there giving this great information. And it's really been wonderful at the school sites that I have visited when parents have all, they've made time for me to, to meet with parents too on their site councils. So, that's been very informative. We've had 82 community meetings since I started, and so, that's either through our nonprofit community or some visits to our town halls or the official town hall and community meetings and parent council meetings that we're doing as part of my 100-day tour. There's been over 1,100 constituents at these community meetings since August, and, but there's been dozens and dozens of meetings through the summer, so, where we didn't really tally the attendance at those meetings. I wanted to just give you an update on transportation, food, nutrition services. We've hired Bertrand Weber, I, I talked about this previously, who's going to assist Laura Benavides and our Food Nutrition Services Department. They're, they're onsite doing that work, as well as Mike Turza, who has been consulting with our Chief Operating Officer, John Hanlon, on transportation and beginning to identify where our systems need to be improved and where investments might need to be made or where efficiencies can be garnered. And so, that's been really helpful, and John and his team, I want to thank them very much, and Delavern for their incredible work to, to really look at this transportation issue to improve our processes. As you know, the DESI review is going on. Today wraps up their last day with us, and so, I was interviewed twice, and our team has been interviewed multiple times. I want to thank Cory Harris and the ODA team for their incredible work getting this all together. Also, our school teams that, you know, opened up their doors and welcomed in our guests and just did such a great job. I think that this information that they give us is going to be very invaluable to helping us plan as we move strategically and giving us a really good look at our academic programming as well as our operations side and how well we're doing that. So, I'm, I'm really anxious and excited to be able to get that information for our planning moving forward. Earlier today, we issued a press release detailing the 2019 results on the National Assessment for Educational Progress. It's a nationwide assessment for students in fourth and eighth grade, also known as the nation's report card. As a whole, the nation saw declines overall, especially in eighth grade reading compared, and compared to the 26 large districts around the country, BPS performed same or better than 20 districts in fourth grade math and reading, 24 districts in eighth grade math, and 23 districts in eighth grade reading. Since 2015, Boston has remained on par with the national average in eighth grade math scores and continued to do so in the 2019 assessment. However, we know that there are still persistent achievement gaps for our students, and we are committed to significantly improving outcomes for our students beyond what can be measured on a national test. NAEP itself is imperfect because it doesn't fully align to include state standards, and so, we'll just take this as one more piece of our overall picture of how we're doing as a district. Speaking of student outcomes, tomorrow is Ed Vestas' 14th Annual Thomas W. Paison School on the Move Prize Ceremony. Last week, we joined Ed Vestas and BPS staff at a special reception for the finalists hosted by Jim and Kathy Stone, and it was just a lovely event, and I want to thank them again publicly for their incredible hospitality and partnership in recognizing our schools that are really doing exceptional work. And I want to take a moment to congratulate the three finalists who are incredibly proud of Manasseh E. Bradley Elementary School in East Boston led by Principal Claire Carney, Harvard Kent Elementary School in Charlestown led by Principal Jason Gallagher, and Thomas J. Kenny Elementary School in Dorchester led by Principal Emily Bryan. I cannot wait to attend tomorrow, and it's fantastic that we are able to celebrate the improvement in our schools in such grand fashion. Regardless of who wins the prize, we can be quite proud of the good work happening at all three of these schools and, and really across all of our schools in the district, and they're just a representation of the incredible work that's going on in our district. Well, this is just a reminder that Halloween is tomorrow. I heard the weather's not going to look so great, so be prepared. I want to make sure that we just remind everybody that their costumes are respective of all cultures, that drivers watch out for our kiddos because it does get dark earlier now, and Boston roads can be quite narrow and kids can dart out. So, please, drivers and public, watch out for our kiddos. And then, my last one is for the youth, don't eat all your candy at once. And with that, that's the superintendent's report.
I hope my kids are watching. Thank you, Superintendent. I'll open up now to members for questions or discussion. Anyway, well, Mr. O'Neill, I know you attended the CGCS conference last week as well, and is the president-elect of that organization representing the 75 largest districts in the country. I'd ask you to just fill us in with any other tidbit you might have picked up with all of our colleagues from across the nation this, this past week.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and we're now actually 76 because while we were there, we voted in Washaw County, Nevada, which is Reno, Nevada. So, we're now the 76 largest urban districts in the country, actually including Toronto, Canada as well, so we're an international member. But it was a fascinating conference, about 1,100 people. It was go-go-go. The schedule for everybody else was basically the superintendent's regular day of visiting about five schools. There were approximately 75 presentations that were made, districts presenting on best practices. The superintendent laid out who from the Boston team was here and made presentations. I will continue to say, and I know I sound like a broken record, that as much as we're always pushing ourselves to do better, when we get on a national stage, there's a outsized attention paid to Boston. I think the superintendent, this came to her loud and clear at this conference, the first time representing Boston, that there was an outsized attention paid to us relative to the size of our district. People want to know what's going on in Boston, what we're doing well. There was incredible interest in the work that Dr. Colin Rose is doing and his team around equity, and particularly how he has been able to embed that work across all the departments in bowling so that everyone is, is working on that issue. There was incredible interest in that, very, very well-attended presentations. There was a lot of interest in My Way Cafe. I know Pittsburgh and Columbus, Ohio have both now approached to find out more about it and would like to bring My Way Cafes immediately to all of their schools. So, that was fascinating to see. We told them hands off until we're done with the rollout in Boston. Couple of the quick things. One, the council has started a new, so the council has a series of task force, and they have for several years had a Black and Latino Young Men and Boys Task Force focusing on that particular population. But the Board of Directors last year started, and this was the first time it happened, and the superintendent and I both attended, the Black and Latina Young Women and Girls Task Force. And very, very engaging, in-depth conversation. The superintendent kept saying, this is my first meeting, I'm not going to say anything, and it took 30 seconds till the hand went up. But that was good because you were passionate about the work. And this is going to be a really great task force that we will participate in, and I think there'll be lessons learned from that that we'll be able to bring back to Boston. One other thing that, a couple of things that happened is, it was very hot, and the superintendent and I got together with a smaller group, including superintendents from Austin and Fort Worth and Portland and Cleveland. We subsequently talked with the superintendent in Baltimore, all of whom expressed strong admiration for you coming here and strong commitment to helping you be successful. So, it's great that you're going to have a network of folks around this, around the country that you can call because they made a very public verbal commitment to helping you be successful. So, that was deeply appreciated. Lastly, at the Board of Directors level, we had fairly substantial talks. The vaping issue is a real issue in school districts across the country. Los Angeles filed a class action lawsuit today representing a number of school districts in California, and we had conversations with them about that. We've already been in conversations, the council's been in conversations with the Attorney Generals across the country that are looking at this effort, Attorney General, excuse me, including the Massachusetts Attorney General's office. And they're going to be, the council's going to be doing a survey of districts to really get a better understanding of how vaping is affecting districts, how opioids are affecting districts, what the costs are for districts, the practices that they've had to put in place for students that are challenged by these issues. And lastly, a fairly substantial talk about cybersecurity. Two council districts have been hit by cyber attacks, Kansas City and Oklahoma City. Oklahoma City had the system shut down for a week. And so, the consensus is that they're starting with smaller districts to learn to then attack bigger districts. The superintendent, I know, was all over this. He was sitting in the meeting finding answers back from your team here, so, but these are real issues that are going on and affecting districts across the country. And the last thing I will say about NAEP, because today, Michael Cassely, when they, when the NAEP governing board rolled out the NAEP results today nationally at a, at a livestreamed event from the National Press Club, Secretary DeVos spoke and was quite, trying to think how to diplomatically phrase this. She used it as an opportunity to cast a lot of aspersions to the work that urban districts are doing. And Michael Cassely then got up and spoke and pointed out that, in fact, the urban districts which volunteered to be a part of this about 15 years ago have closed the gap with the national averages. So, though the national averages have been flat, the urban districts collectively have been moving up, including over the past several years. And a superintendent mentioned that there's some questions about whether NAEP reflects state standards. Working through the council, NAEP has now adjusted it, so they did make adjustments in the 2017 results and the 2019 results to better reflect the alignment with state standards. So, in fact, Boston saw a 1% increase in both our '17 and '19 results in math, which was what the issue was noted on. That was a relatively small compared to some other urban districts that saw 5% and 6% increases. The reason being is, in fact, our teaching is actually fairly well-aligned to Massachusetts standards compared to some other states where the urban districts are very different. So, that is relatively good news for us as well. But overall, they continue to be a great partner from us, and we go and learn and come back charged up, right, Superintendent?
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Thank you for that comprehensive summary, and thank you so much for raising the, the issue of NAEP once again, as well as, as you rightly point out. It's, again, evidence that we're on the right track with respect to incremental progress, but also, once again, you know, with, in a, in a pattern that's similar to many of the other reports that we receive on a regular basis, the, you know, often reports who are going out and asking groups to perform on our behalf. It's demonstrating once again that we do have persistent opportunity in achievement gaps that we're not necessarily making progress on. And so, it demonstrates to us that we definitely have work that remains, and it's the work that drives us every day. Thank you both to Superintendent and Mr. O'Neill for representing us at the, at the Council of Great City Schools meeting last week, as well as all of your colleagues. I believe you mentioned Ms. Cindy Nielsen, Priya Taliani, Dr. Colin Rose, and did I miss anyone else?
Charles.
Charles. Charles Grandson, yes.
And, oh yeah, Harold, and.
Harold from Opportunity.
And one other.
Harold Noah.
Community member.
Well, what she said earlier, right?
Yeah. Well, there's a few others.
And Laura Benavides.
And Laura with the, the My Way presentation. Well, excellent, and I thank you once again. If I missed anybody, I apologize. That error is mine, but thank you for representing the district. Are there any, any other comments or questions for the superintendent?
My only question is, again, about the NAEP scores and, again, the question of disaggregating the data because it keeps giving us the white, black, those things, and it doesn't really tell us anything. I have asked forever if we could ever disaggregate the, the black data so that we know who the American-born, English-speaking students are versus Caribbean, African, other students so that we can begin to at least understand what are we doing for our native-born speakers, our native-born American children, Boston-born, et cetera? Because if we're not doing well by them, who don't often have additional other issues that we may be looking at, who are we doing well by? And, you know, and can we disaggregate who our white students are? You know, are there English language learners? Are they mostly middle-class? We, we don't know. So, until we begin to understand who we're talking about, these words, to me, are meaningless because it doesn't really tell me where we are, if we are moving the mark anywhere.
Well, I could certainly look into that. I'm not as familiar with the TUDAS because this is the first time I've led a large urban district, but I will definitely look into seeing if there's a way for us to get our data without identifying, you know, identifying students and that sort of thing. So, I will.
But we often report our data in this way, whether in MCAS or any other ways. We're still not sort of drilling down to who are we talking about? Who are our kids, are the same kids, you know, year after year, same groups not performing? Do we see changes? We don't get that level of, you know, information.
I'll look into that. I'll look into that with our ODA office and see. I, I know that the state probably wouldn't do it or at NAEP, at the NAEP level, but we might be able to do that by some matching within our, I'll, I'll ask ODA about it.
All righty, thank you.
I see Mr. Harris is here, so we can check that out.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson, and thank you, Superintendent. And Dr. Rivera.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to just note that there is a bill in the House right now, a data equity bill, that would require the state to disaggregate the data it collects, and maybe there's an opportunity there because clearly for Hispanics, there's lots of major differences between Salvadoranos, recently arrived from Central America versus, you know, other groups that have been here longer. So, we really need that, that data to be disaggregated, and I hope people will support that bill.
We actually.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
We actually passed this law in Minnesota, and as commissioner, we had to fill out, do the forms and figure out how to collect it, and I'll tell you those stories offline sometime on, on the challenges of that and, and the community engagement process and, you know, our Native American community, our Asian community. It's, it was really enlightening process to, to do that, so.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill.
And I would simply say, my guess is right now, at least on NAEP or TUDAS, the trial urban districts, portion of it, they don't break it down that way, but I will bring back to the council the suggestion that the council use their power because I guarantee you, all these other school districts would be actually very interested in that. I think it's a great suggestion. So, see if the council can use their power so on the next NAEP test two years from now, in fact, it has that longer list for students to choose from versus the smaller level.
Thank you.
Thank you, members, for that additional input. Before we move on, I just wanted to share a note of all of our collective condolences with the, the Latin School community. A member of that family, Michael Giordano, passed away last week for most of his tenure at BLS, Gio, as he was known, served as the Director of the College Resource Center and touched many lives that came through that school over the many years that he taught at the school. Gio designed programming that prepared students to understand the wide array of opportunities in the world of higher education, and he also served as an athletic coach for more than three decades at the school. He left his role at BLS earlier, excuse me, this past summer for a role with BPS Health and Safety, but he leaves a lasting legacy and will be deeply missed by many. So, it's our condolences that we pass along to his wife and children and the BLS community at large. And one other note before we move on is with that Nate Blacharic million-dollar donation to the Latin Academy Foundation, as the superintendent mentioned earlier, he has offered to match up to an additional $1 million in the form of an additional donation to the school. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Blacharic. He's first, first person I've ever received an email from who's a billionaire, which I thought, you know, I should print that, print that one out and frame that. But he, he, it's very gracious of him to, to lead this effort of philanthropy at a school that very, very much deserves it in the way of its physical plant at the, the Latin Academy facility over on Townsend Street. And I think it gives us a very easy opportunity as a community to, to rise up along with him and double the amount that we can give to, to help further support that. So, it is a one-to-one match. I believe it's for a limited time only. I don't know what that limited time is, but, sorry?
For June 15th.
Okay, so it's through the school year. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Robinson, a girls' Latin School alum, of course. I just wanted to share the website. It's BLAGLS.org is where you can go for the Latin School, excuse me, Latin Academy Foundation to, to match that donation. So, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report as submitted. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tron. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Any objection to receiving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, we'll move on now to our monthly student report. I present to you our student representative, Ms. Evelyn Reyes.
Good evening, all. I'll jump right in. So during the first week of October, BSAC completed a four-day training with all members and started the application process for the working group. We have since concluded the hiring, and the twelve students on the working group represent BAA, BLS, cash, Dearborn, English, Fenway, Henderson Upper, Burke, O'Bryant, and New Mission. Looking at the bigger picture, ninety-four percent of BPS secondary schools have identified BSAC reps this year.
That's great.
Yeah. And now that we have a full body, we have jumped right into our work. This past Monday, all members of BSAC participated in the DESI review and also chose their subcommittees that they will be working with for the rest of the year.
That's awesome.
And next Monday, we'll be conducting our annual listening project. And that's all for now.
Well, thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Dr. Rivera, Ms. Reyes?
What is your listening project? What is that about?
So we, every year, participate in the dignity in schools campaign, Week of Action, and we send out students to four different locations. They're all train stops, so Buggles, Dudley, Forest Hills, and Roxbury Crossing. And we have a survey, and we ask students that are coming from Fenway, for example, if they're at Roxbury Crossing. We ask them the questions on the survey, and then we collect all of that data and sort of look at it and think, and present it to the district and think about policy that could change based on that survey. Oh, and the survey has to do with discipline in BPS.
And that survey work you've done, that's similar to what you've done on an annual basis, and I believe that one of those years led to the creation of the Student Rights App that has been so helpful to so many students in understanding the code of conduct across the district.
Yep.
So that's great work, and we're appreciated. We appreciate the fact that you've been able to do that year over year, because it can show that the interest in the app, the ability for students to better understand what discipline looks like in the district. And so, it's a great work on behalf of your group. Are there other questions or comments for our student rep? Vice Chair.
I just have a comment and a question. So I just wanted to say with BSAC, I really encourage you to keep, continue to focus on your climate work that you're doing, and I really just wanted to also thank all the students that wrote us. I don't think I've received ever so many emails on any topic, and it was really wonderful to see that. And I know there was a lot of BSAC action around that, so I thank BSAC. And I encourage all those students to continue that work and get more involved, not just climate, that is important, but other pieces, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. One other thing I should mention that I neglected to mention earlier, and BSAC is a good opportunity to, presents a good opportunity to thank for their service in this regard, is the further progress that we've made on the Student Opportunity Act up at the State House. And BSAC, once again, in concert with a number of other community groups across the city and the state, have been working at the State House with the House and the Senate to pass a bill that will increase state spending on education going forward. And so, I think we, at our last meeting, we summarized the Student Opportunity Act, last two meetings, as a matter of fact. First, with a presentation from city budget, talked a little bit about what that $1.4 billion in additional spending statewide will mean for Boston, and then with an update that the Senate had passed that bill. The Houses now, as of last Wednesday, passed a version of the Student Opportunity Act as well, and so we thank them greatly for that work. It's on now to a conference committee. There are a few differences between the two bills that need to be hammered out between the bodies before those bills are passed and sent along to, as one, to the governor's desk for signature. So, we'll continue to watch closely what the conference committee does. There's, they were named earlier this week. I believe there's three representatives each from the House of Representatives and the Senate, and those include the chairs of, excuse me, the joint co-chairs, the co-chairs of the Joint Committee on Education, excuse me, which is a joint committee between the Senate and House, as well as the respective chairs of the Ways and Means Committee in each body, as well as a few other representatives. So these are the individuals that know education policy and have all the, hold the purse strings on behalf of the state. So we'll look forward to them working this out and bringing forward a bill that will have meaningful impacts for our district and children across the state. So if there are no further questions, we will move on again in our meeting to public comment. Any further's? Okay. Well, thank you again, Ms. Reyes, and we look forward to your report once again next month. Ms. Sullivan, we'll move on now to general public comment.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. LaCanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, students, and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then thirty seconds. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes per person. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras will only record speakers who face the committee. We have three speakers this evening, and we'll begin with John Mudd, followed by Robert Jenkins and Ruby Reyes.
Good evening. John Mudd, Advocate Emeritus. I wanted to follow up on my testimony two weeks ago about the achievement gap in MCAS results. And I wanted to make a plea that when you schedule a follow-up to find out what the district is proposing to deal with those gaps, and as you recall, in each of the measurable items, for blacks, Latinos versus whites, in fourth grade and eighth grade, in English Language Arts, and in math, there was an increase in the gap. This is clearly disturbing, and I hope will call for some kind of urgent response from the district and you. But the plea is that you go beyond the existing equity statements that you're receiving that, in my view, are too general and too vague. They grew out of a policy adopted when Reverend Grover was chair of the school committee, that there should be an achievement gap impact statement for every policy, budget, and report that comes to the school committee. And the intent of that was that there be a definition, if we are trying to close the gaps between blacks and Latinos and whites, or special ed and regular students, or English language learners and non-English language learners, that there be presented a logic of action. How is the proposal going to make it so that blacks and whites, blacks and Latinos, or special ed or ELLs will learn faster than whites? Otherwise, the gap won't close. And what's been happening traditionally here is that whites are improving faster than those other marginalized groups. So I would hope you would ask for such a real logic of action, achievement gap impact statement in each of these areas. I think it's crucial. Secondly, I'm going to make a plea which may sound a little technical, but I think has to do, is very important, and that is that when you get a budget this year, that you ask that the line item budget be accompanied by what I'm calling a program budget. And I hope that most of you understand what is meant by a program budget. It means not just the number of people, or the facilities, or the resources, but how are we using those resources in each program area? There's a tendency to have a line item budget and then to focus on some marginal improvements. We talk about ten or twenty million dollars of a billion-dollar budget, and don't look at how we're using the nine hundred and eighty million dollars, the rest of the billion-dollar total. And that is crucial. It's crucial to have a narrative. I gave you a table of contents from 2014, in which there's about sixty pages of description of those program areas. The $250 million in special education, the $100 million in English language learners. And a final plea, professional development is crucial to dealing with the achievement gap. We don't know how much we're spending, how that is going, and that needs to be dealt with as a program area in the budget. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Our next speaker is Robert Jenkins, and he'll be followed by Ruby Reyes.
Good evening, Mr. Jenkins.
Good evening. Guys, I'm probably thinking like what I'm going to say today. I wear many hats, but the hat I'm going to wear today is a volunteer hat. I have the pleasure of volunteering at three schools. Rafael Hernandez, the Pauline Shaw, and now, the Blackstone. It brings me a lot of joy putting twelve hours of volunteer at those schools. And what I see at these schools is amazing, that is just like the camaraderie, because at the Blackstone, I'm with Generations Incorporated, which I helped schedule a meeting with the superintendent. It's where I become a distinguished adult that we give back, reading literacy. I'm a reading coach, and I'm in the classroom. So it brings me a lot of joy. Unfortunately, the Rafael Hernandez and the Shaw lost funding from, Generations lost funding because of budget cuts to those schools, but I still stayed on to volunteer my own time. And I just want to bring out that when it comes down, this is budget season, we need to look at all schools. I know I've been at a number of meetings with the superintendent. I will still be going to a lot of community meetings with her. I like what's going on. I feel the, I feel the, how can you say, the joy that she had put, you know, as she has put out there? Not the joy, but the juice.
The juice.
The juice, you know? I saw the video, because I do, you know, work, you know, within the confines of the department. But another thing about those three schools that they have in common, they are old buildings. The Hernandez and the Pauline Shaw are probably well over eighty to a hundred years old. The Blackstone, I know that money has been put into the Blackstone, because they're one of the seventies schools. So I know that, you know, Bill BPS, and I know that the superintendent is working, and she's coming up with a facilities plan. But please take account into all the schools that, when this plan is done, I know will have the input, and, you know, the input from the community, as that's what she's doing now. But taking account of those schools, those schools are still thriving. For instance, the Shaw, the Shaw does not have an auditorium. They do not have a working cafeteria, nor do have a gymnasium, and their schoolyard is outdated, because it's on concrete. So just take advantage that those schools are still doing well. That's all I need to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good evening. My name is Ruby Reyes. I'm the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. Beja is asking the school committee to not move forward on the Boys and Girls Club proposal and to leave the McCormick School fields as green space for community and student use. We ask that a community process where students, teachers, and parents are involved in designing their new school spaces carried out, which includes their fields. The mayor's excited support of this public-private project is leaving the most important public, the McCormick community, out. As a school community, you are sensitive to how important righting the wrongs of the McCormick school redesign was. You incorporated language in your resolution to ensure that the McCormick community was consulted in regards to their fields. The McCormick students came to the last school committee meeting and clearly told you all the reasons why they wanted to keep their green space and how they were left out of the community process. The same McCormick school community, only last year, went through the trauma of being told they were closing. The decision to close the school was made with little input from the community, and the communication was initially done through a letter in a child's backpack. The McCormick community then had to fight to keep their school open. The district responded with working with the McCormick community to find a solution. It was a moment in trying to fix a mistake. The Boys and Girls Club proposal is another mistake. In the wellness study that will be presented later this evening, the district noted the importance of improving physical space and equipment available to students. How can we be improving these statistics on wellness when we allow resources that would be used to do that to be handed over to private developers who never have the most impacted community members' actual needs in mind when laying out blueprints and plans? Bill BPS is supposed to be transparent, thoughtfully crafted, and a long-term vision plan for the district. But, short-sighted decision-making that impacts students and communities negatively will lead to more distress to BPS and further resistance from them to work hand-in-hand with administrators if their concerns continue to fall on deaf ears and final plans do not incorporate any of the feedback you all seek. You have clearly heard from the McCormick students, and they have clearly stated that they want their green space and fields to stay intact. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. And, Ms. Reyes, thank you for raising the McCormick issue tonight. As many of you know, we had, I believe, fourteen speakers here last, or at the last meeting, not last week, to speak on that proposal. And the superintendent, and I won't speak for you, of course, so if there's anything you'd like to add, obviously took that to heart, and there has been another meeting scheduled with the McCormick community. I want to stress as well that that meeting's coming up next week. I believe it's on Monday, the fourth. You know, there's been no scheduling of any votes with the committee. The district has made steady progress over the year with respect to what to do with that parcel, which correctly, as stated in testimony, was allowed to be let out through a school committee vote earlier this year, or I believe it was even last year at this point. But that vote stipulated that there would be no transfer or conveying of the land until that a satisfactory RFP proposal came back to the committee for a vote. And so, the district's taking its time. You know, the district's not in a position to put anything forward to us at this point. I've conferred with a number of individuals in the superintendent's senior staff on this proposal and understand there's a lot of work to do, and the district staff certainly understands that there's a lot of work to do with the community to get us to a place where all can feel heard and comfortable with what will happen with that property going forward. And so, I appreciate you taking further steps to meet with the McCormick community and for staying true to the process that this body laid out when this proposal was first brought to us last year. So, with that said, we'll move on now to further items in the meeting, and our only action item this evening is grants for approval totaling $75,000. I'll open it up now to questions and comments from the committee. Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grants as presented. Thank you, Vice Chair. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Okay, we'll move on now to our first report. That's the nomination of three new members to the English Language Learners Task Force. And my fellow members, as you have a memo before you in your packets this evening from Dr. Rivera, one of the co-chairs of the ELL Task Force, you'll note that that memo outlines this evening's proposal, and your packets also include resumes for each of the three individuals that are being nominated for membership on the task force. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Rivera to speak a little bit more about tonight's nominees.
So yes, thank you so much for this opportunity to present. We have five departing members from the English Learners Task Force, and so, we solicited nominations for additional members to join the task force, and their resumes are attached, are out there, right? The resumes? Are they shared already?
Ms. Sullivan, do we also provide resumes? No.
Okay, so then I'll say a little bit about them. So one of the new members will hopefully join us is... So one of the new members will hopefully join us is Angelina Camacho, who brings her knowledge of parent and community engagement and deep familiarity with BPS schools, and she has a pretty extensive experience working with youth and families in Boston. Also, Dr. Fabian Torres Ardea is a UMass Boston researcher who also works with training teachers in math and science who work with English learners and can bring some of that expertise to the task force. And then we are really excited to have Dr. Roseanne Tong, who has been an active member of the task force for many years, and she is going to join us and has a lot of expertise in evaluation research and just a broad, incredible amount of research. She's done on English learners and equity in education. So we respectfully request the approval of the school committee for these three nominees. We believe they bring skills and knowledge that will allow the task force to continue its strong work to monitor district policies, practices, programs, their impact on EL services and outcomes, and as well to assess program quality, which is gonna be a key goal this year, and also advocating to improve EL services. And we're hoping that these three members also will help us take opportunity with the Look Act and see, you know, different models for delivery of ELs. And yeah, we're looking forward to discussing this proposal this evening, and thank you for your attention.
Well, thank you, Dr. Rivera, and I know each of these individuals has had a lot of exposure to BPS over time. I think many of us know Ms. Camacho from her work on the Citywide Parents Council and Ms. Tong from her work with CCE, and I believe she serves on the governing board for the Munoz Academy as well. And so it's great to have people that have a wealth of knowledge and can hit the ground running at the district. One other thing I'll note for our members as well is typically when we nominate new members to a task force, it's at the time when we have a presentation and a reauthorization for a task force. That's being delayed until a later date to allow some further work to be done by the task force and also to prepare the district to speak to its work in the area of English language learners as well. So we'll be looking forward to scheduling that when we meet in a few short weeks at our scheduling retreat. So I'll open it up now to members for questions and discussion. I believe, Dr. Coleman, you had a comment?
A fantastic of people, and Dr. Tong was also on the report on English, on the access to the exam schools. She did that report as well, so she's deep knowledge and important stuff for this.
Excellent. Far and wide. A parent, I'm sorry, a parent of a Fenway graduate. Excellent.
I also point out that Ms. Camacho is not only, has been on the Citywide Parents Council, but is also a graduate of Boston Public Schools as well.
Very good.
Wonderful.
Well, it's great to keep people engaged that have been engaged for so long in our district, and we look forward to the good work that they'll be doing along with the returning members of the task force. If there's nothing further from the members, we'll look forward to taking action on this recommendation at our next meeting, which is next week, Wednesday, November sixth. Thank you, Dr. Rivera.
Thank you.
Well, we have another nomination coming up as well, which is the nomination of Marinelle Rumineer as co-chair of the School Quality Working Group, Part Two. I'm sorry. Again, as fellow members know, Ms. Rumineer's name is well familiar to us, and she's been before us many times. She's probably getting her rest this evening, as she has an early morning tomorrow in her day job as director of Ed Vestas in awarding the School on the Move Prize that you heard about from the superintendent earlier, and she's been a longtime member of the School Quality Working Group as well. So I wanted to ask Dean Coleman, who's the other current co-chair of the working group, to say a few words on this nomination.
Well, you make it easy. I think she speaks for herself, so I don't have much to add. And then the important part is, as we're in the transition of taking the working group from focusing on developing a framework to a more of advisory role, I think her expertise will be well, probably important for us to stay focused.
Wonderful. And also a BPS parent, as our vice chair points out, at two schools, I believe, currently. So with that very short presentation, if there are any other questions or comments from our members? Looks like none. Well, again, you know, Ms. Rumineer and Ed Vestas are very well-known to us and very well-known to this work, and I know Dean Coleman worked quite a while on trying to convince her to take on this role as co-chair, and so we appreciate her finding time in her schedule to do so. So we'll look forward to, at our next meeting, taking action on that nomination as well. Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Okay, moving on to our main report of the evening, we're gonna welcome forward a few members of the district to present the annual report from the District Wellness Council on our district's wellness policy. So at this time, I'd like to invite the following folks to step forward. Jill Carter, who's our assistant superintendent for Selwell Instruction and Policy, and also co-chair of the district's Wellness Council. Marika Lear, I hope I pronounced that.
Marika.
Marika Lear. Is it, did I get the Lear right?
Lear, yeah.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for bearing with me. She's the assistant director of Wellness Policy and Promotions. And is Dr. Lowe joining you as well this evening?
Unfortunately not. She's not able to make it tonight.
Okay. Well, Ms., Dr. Jennifer Lowe is a fellow co-chair of the District Wellness Council, and she's also a medical director at the Boston Public Health Commission. So we send our thanks to her for her work, and we look forward to your presentation tonight. Superintendent, do you have any opening remarks?
I just want to thank her for her comprehensive report. I was able to review it during my transition, actually, and we've been trying to get it on the calendar for the school committee, and they've just done a wonderful job, and Marika especially, putting all of this together under the leadership of Jill. So just two fantastic individuals here.
Thank you.
Well, please take it away.
All right. Well, good evening. I first want to just apologize. I do have a little bit of a cold, so I have my water, I have my cough drops, and I have, if I'm starting to cough too much, I'll pass it off to Marika. But we're gonna share the presentation. So, good evening. Again, my name is Jill Carter. I'm the assistant superintendent of Selwell Policy and Instruction, and I'm joined, again, by Marika Lear. She's the assistant director of Wellness Policy and Promotions from the Health and Wellness Department. And I'm here in my role as the co-chair of the District Wellness Council, which is a superintendent-appointed advisory committee that develops, recommends, reviews, and advises on health-related district policies. And the District Wellness Council is also tasked with evaluating and reporting on the implementation of that policy, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. And as I mentioned, unfortunately, Dr. Lowe, my co-chair, the medical director of the Health Commission, was unable to join us today, but was very much involved in the process. I want to make sure that I also acknowledge and thank last year's District Wellness Council members and the subcommittees of all the co-chairs who helped gather this large amount of data, and the Health and Wellness Department staff that compiled the data and wrote the report on behalf of the council. And I'm actually gonna also acknowledge Pam Acero, who's sitting over on the side, because she's our data and evaluation manager and has done a lot to gather all this data. So, and as I get started, I want to point out, and I want to acknowledge, some people might be asking themselves, why are we presenting on data from 2017 in the fall of 2019? The District Wellness Council always compiles data and writes a report on the previous school year, a one-year delay. This report was completed in June, and we thought it was actually a good-eyed opportunity to delay and be able to present this report to the new superintendent and district leadership and to the school committee members at this time. We know that you've heard recent updates on some of the metrics from our colleagues in different departments, and we'll reference that. But what this report allows us to do is to look at those metrics in tandem and discuss their connection to the impact on student health outcomes. Additionally, I want to recognize that federal and state law require that BPS submit this annual report on activities of the District Wellness Council and an assessment of the implementation of this policy. We alternate between a qualitative report and a quantitative, and this report is quantitative. So with that, I'll go ahead and get started. So, the Boston Public Schools strives to be one of the healthiest school districts in the country. Research shows that healthy students are better learners. We are committed to actively promoting the social, emotional, and the physical wellness of all students to support both their healthy development and their readiness to learn. The BPS Health and Wellness mission is essential to closing the opportunity gaps. Research clearly indicates that health inequities interfere with learning and disproportionately impact low-income youth of color. In order to close the access and achievement gaps, we must address health inequities that make it difficult for students to focus on learning and contribute to them missing school. We know that it will take a multi-level collaborative approach to make change in Boston Public Schools in this area. It really takes the whole school and the whole community to serve the development of the whole child. Educational and health equity for BPS students is at the center of the implementation of this policy. Our instructional standards state that educators will create safe, healthy, and sustaining learning environments, and addressing the needs of the whole child is essential for graduation and college and career readiness. Our wellness policy creates the roadmap for ensuring that BPS schools are safe, healthy, and sustaining for all students. The wellness policy aligns with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention and ASCD's whole-school, whole-community, whole-child model. We have been nationally recognized as having one of the most comprehensive policies in the country. The wellness policy is an umbrella policy that links all district health-related policies under eight policy components listed here. As you probably remember, that the last major update that we had to the policy was in 2017, but most recently in May, we updated some language on health education. This rapport illustrates how the health of BPS students and schools drives the work of various departments and offices to coordinate across policy areas to provide support to schools and direct supports to students. The coordination pushes the health and wellness mission of BPS forward. The BPS wellness policy strives to ensure equity of programs and services for all students. Turn it over to Marika.
So the District Wellness Council conducted an overhaul of the monitoring and evaluation plan for the wellness policy back in 1718, based on feedback that we are hearing from council stakeholders as well as you and the school committee. So each policy subcommittee created a logic model for their policy area, and then they used that logic model to identify process outcomes as well as short-term, intermediate, and long-term impact measures. They worked with central office departments to identify metrics and data sources for each outcome. Where possible, we used existing data sources, but there were some new metrics that were not yet collected in 1718. The report makes comparisons to our 1516 report where it's possible, and you can see a full list of the metrics in Appendix D of the report. This also means that there are more metrics and dimensions in each policy area than we'd have time to cover in this presentation. So we'll hit on some bright spots in each policy area, share some key trends and changes in cross-cutting student outcomes, and discuss areas for growth. Jill mentioned, on each slide, we have the data from school year 1718, and we'll share updated data where we have it. So as has been mentioned even in this meeting tonight, the school meals program is a shining bright spot for the district. And as you heard from our colleagues from FNS, 100% of schools are now offering breakfast after the bell, and 37 schools have My Way Cafe, which was a huge jump from the 1718 pilot. Physical education continues to increase, see an increase in the number of schools for pre-K through 12 that are staffed to meet the policy according to our district's staffing ratio. All schools that are serving pre-K through 5 reported providing recess for all those students, and 90% of them were already meeting our new minute requirements in the policy. Central Office supports included reaching schools, reaching staff in 79 schools through professional development, and 53 teachers at 41 schools through intensive two-year instructional coaching. Moving on to comprehensive health education, BPS has been able to improve sexual health education over the past five years, in part due to funding that we've received from the CDC. We are now up to 72% of all schools implementing sexual health education, and 82% of high schools doing so. In 1718, the Central Office trained teachers and staff from 56 schools through professional development, and teachers at 63 schools received one-on-one instructional coaching. Now, again, we know that you've recently heard from our colleagues in facilities about the bright spots related to the water policy. Total of 17 school sites have now been brought online for drinking tap water, and they've seen significant reductions in issues identified through water quality testing. There have also been a lot of wonderful resources developed to support schools in implementing green school efforts. So in Safe and Supportive Schools also has many bright spots. In 1718, 119 schools reported having student support teams to collaboratively address behavioral health issues. Also, 89% of schools were partnering with one or more behavioral health community partners to deliver services to students. 87% of schools reported implementing a multi-tiered system of supports, and as of this year, 70 schools have been trained specifically to implement the comprehensive behavioral health model, and another 10 schools are being trained this year. As the district began to roll out the BPS social-emotional learning standards and signature practices, 50 schools reported having most or all of their staff and teachers trained on SEL standards, and 45 schools reported having at least some of their staff and teachers trained. Related to specific supports for vulnerable populations, Opportunity Youth has successfully worked with schools to ensure that all schools have a trained homelessness liaison, and with ongoing support from the Equity Office, the Health and Wellness Department, and other community partners have contributed to an increase in gay-straight alliance clubs for high schools. We also want to recognize that since 2017, when this data was collected, there have been significant investments in school psychologists, social workers, and nurses, increasing the school's capacity to provide health and behavioral health services directly to students. This year, BPS is hiring additional school nurses so that we can reach our goal of having full-time nurse in every school. There has been an improvement in the existence of condom accessibility teams, or CATs, in high schools, and this year, all CAT members in every school will be receiving new training. Last, strong collaborations with community partners have expanded our ability to provide health services, and that includes 12 school-based health centers serving 14 schools and eight health resource centers serving nine schools. Additionally, community partners have worked with schools to provide onsite health services, including dental services for 95 schools. Lastly, the school committee has also heard from our colleagues in Opportunity Gap Office and the Equity Office about the district's increase in training opportunities for district and school-based staff, and they have reported that- And they have reported that they've increased the training in 2018, 2019 to 83 different training opportunities. In 1718, we saw that 55 schools included a cultural proficiency goal on their school's wellness action plan. Owning that cultural proficiency is a vital part of school wellness. We also saw a large percent of schools working on staff wellness initiatives, and we were able to get a higher percent of schools submitting higher-quality wellness action plans for their school's wellness council.
The implementation, excuse me, of BPS health-related policies in the past 12-plus years are creating safer, healthier, and more welcoming school environments, and this will impact student health over time. Student health behaviors are also impacted by access to resources and services in their homes and their communities. Therefore, where BPS policies and initiatives are aligned with larger city and statewide efforts, we would expect even larger impacts on student health. The data presented in this report provide evidence that this approach is already having the intended impact at the school level, as Maureen has shared, and in some health areas at the student level, which I'll bring up in a moment. Starting on page 51 of this report, we include youth risk behavior survey data, body mass index, and asthma data from school nurses, and data from school climate surveys as student outcome indicators. In our discussion, we highlighted how all this work comes together to impact four priority health areas for our students. In this slide, we will share just a little bit about the major trends and changes we've seen in the youth risk behavior survey data. The data points for each bullet, though, are listed in the appendix slides, and there are also more details in the appendix H and I in the report itself. But on this slide, on the left are the trends that indicate positive change. We have seen long-term decreases in current cigarettes and cigar smoking, and current alcohol use, and a two-year decrease in current use of electronic vapor products. For all these substance use data points, on the positive side, Boston students are statistically less likely to engage in these behavior than their state and national peers. We've also seen long-term decreases in physical fights and carrying a weapon to school property. Long-term decreases in student pregnancies, students ever having sex, and currently sexually active students. And lastly, a long-term decrease in soda consumption. And really, these are a few highlights. There's many other positive trends if you look into the report. On the right side, you can see trends, as well as disparities, that are cause for concern. We have seen a long-term increase in current marijuana use, a long-term decrease in condom use among sexually active students, and a long-term increase in students who felt depressed. There are statistically significant disparities for students identifying as lesbian, gay, or bisexual. These students are more likely to experience violence, bullying, and self-harm, and report higher rates of depression and suicidality. After juggling all of these data points, people may want to know, so where are we with implementing this policy? This image tells us two things overall. One, how well is a particular policy area being implemented? And that's from not being implemented on the left side of the big arrow to partially implemented in the middle, to fully implemented on the right side. And number two, how has the implementation changed since the last time we measured it in 1516? The logic models have allowed us to better evaluate where we are along this spectrum of policy implementation and estimate whether it has improved, worsened, or stayed the same. The figure shows that four policy areas are almost fully in place, and most of the policy areas are partially in place. Cultural proficiency, staff wellness, pre-K to 8, physical education, health services, wellness councils are all improved, which is shown by the green triangles. Shown by the blue diamonds, you'll see that food and nutrition, physical activity, healthy school environments, and Safe and Supportive Schools have seen some improvements and some setbacks, so that overall, we think we are, that there wasn't significant progress on implementation in 1718. Unfortunately, comprehensive health education overall has not improved, and there have been some setbacks at the high school level in year 1718 around PE. So both areas are being poorly implemented. So, while the data from the rapport is from 1718, the recommendations are just as salient to us in this school year. All departments responsible for implementation of areas of the policy should develop or continue to develop a strategic plan and benchmarks for addressing the key issues and report recommendations. The district must continue to improve communications of the policy and outcomes to district leaders, schools, youth, and families. And finally, continue to strengthen the District Wellness Council and its subcommittees. I wanted to note that on the left side, the chart on the left shows that schools have already set goals and are engaged in many improvements in their buildings related to this work. Because the data do show that we have major areas of growth, I'm going to highlight a few of those recommendations. First, on comprehensive health education. Improving the health literacy of our students so that they graduate being able to set health goals, navigate their own and their family's healthcare, build strong relationships, and maintain their health and wellness throughout their lives should be one of the foundational academic goals of the Boston Public Schools. And comprehensive health education addresses topics like chronic disease and substance use prevention, as well as physical, social, emotional, and mental health promotion. Yet only, yet 47% of schools serving grades 6 through 12 have no required health education course. 56% of schools serving K to 5 do not teach comprehensive health ed. Our students are not consistently and equitably receiving skills-based, standards-based, comprehensive health ed during their time at BPS. While we work with some great community partners to address a variety of health topics, they do not take the place of licensed classroom teachers implementing a scope and sequence of standards-based curriculum. So therefore, the District Wellness Council recommends that BPS make it a priority to increase the number of licensed health education teachers teaching skills-based comprehensive health, and improve schools' master schedule planning to include time for health ed as a part of the district's alignment around MasCor. Second area of recommendation. Physical education and physical activity in school help build physical literacy among students. Only 30% of schools serving grades 6 to 8 report following recess policy, and over a quarter of all schools report still withholding physical activity at recess as a punishment. The District Wellness Council recommends that schools increase time in the schedule for recess from grades 6 to 8 to meet the policy, and that district provides training and resources to support schools in managing recess for these grades. Regarding PE in high schools, only 58% of schools serving grades 9 through 12 reported providing at least one semester of PE in each grade. The District Wellness Council recommends increasing staffing for high school PE and improving schools' master schedule planning to include PE in grades 9 through 12, also as a part of the district-proposed alignment with MasCor. Third, we know that social-emotional development in students is critical for learning. It's critical for short-term and long-term health outcomes, helping them to manage stress, develop healthy relationships, and make healthy choices. We also know that building adult cell skills that are supported, in support of CLSP, are critical for making sure that staff are able to build long-term trusting relationships with students in their classroom and ensuring that classrooms are engaging and inclusive. Our data tells us that mental health issues are on the rise. LGBTQ youth specifically are at very high risk for negative health impact and quality of life outcomes. This work is foundational and needs to be in place in all schools in order to promote health and learning and address rising mental health and substance use. For this reason, the District Wellness Council recommends that we continue to increase the capacity of school-based staff to support social-emotional development of students as a Tier 1 approach. This is referring to building cell-informed teaching practices in all schools. Oh, sorry. Finally, creating safe and healthy school environments requires that we improve school physical spaces to promote health and wellness as a part of Build BPS. That means adding gymnasiums, nursing spaces, cafeterias, outdoor spaces, water, lighting, heating, and ventilation systems that support and promote health. This work takes a team at the district level and at the school level, and connected to community. It takes the whole-school, whole-community approach, and we are very excited that the superintendent plans, about the superintendent's plans for implementing hub or community schools. This will help us make the wellness policy implementation a reality. So, thank you for listening to this fairly lengthy report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carter, and thank you, you know, for the lengthy report. I know you worked very hard to narrow down what's in this very dense document that...
Yes, and not maybe enough.
But we deeply appreciate you calling out what's the salient points for us, and I'm sure we could go on for much longer.
I'm just wondering before, I apologize for interrupting. There is one more slide that the superintendent had wanted us to update the school committee and others on around what we're currently doing around vaping, because that's an emergent topic. So I didn't know if you want us to present on that now, or ask questions about the report.
Well, I'm looking to my left and looking to my right, and it looks like a number of my fellow members had the same thought that I had, which was one of my first questions, what are we doing about vaping? So maybe if you want to take a couple extra minutes and talk about that.
Okay, sure. Absolutely. I didn't, I felt the need to pause because of the length that our report was, so thank you.
No, please, go ahead.
So, we'll just share a little bit about, there's a lot going on. So I first want to recognize that, that, oh, sorry, I'll start again, but I think this is vaping and of whether we're talking about tobacco products or marijuana products is really, obviously, as we all know, a very significant public health concern. And so, thinking about vaping prevention is really something important that we thought we needed to report on right now. We are working very closely with the Boston Public Health Commission, as well as folks over in City Hall and Health and Human Services to do the, to do some of the things that we're going to tell you about here briefly. Just to remind folks where we are, though, with our youth risk survey data. From 2017, middle school students told us that 7.3% of them were using, were vaping. And in 2017, high school students told us that 5.7% were vaping, and that was down from 14.5% in 2015. Again, both of these years were lower than the state average or federal average reported in similar surveys. So that's really an important piece. I do want to highlight, though, that there's disparities in the data. White, non-Hispanic students and Hispanic students are more likely than Black and non-Hispanic students and Asian, non-Hispanic students to vape. I can share the exact data with you. And students reporting a sexuality as lesbian, gay, and bisexual are also more likely than heterosexual students to vape. So we know that we still have those disparities that we must address, even with the fairly good numbers for 2017. We are due to get our 2019 data, which the students just reported out in the spring. And once we have that, we can update you on that. And of course, based on what's in the news, we would, there may, people would be curious to see if there's going to be an uptick over the last couple of years. We would probably expect so. But what are we doing? First, I wanted to just say that many, I already mentioned that we're working across the city agencies. One of the most important things that we're doing with them is looking at our tobacco-free environment policy that prohibits tobacco and nicotine, and that currently prohibits e-cigarettes. So we, in 20, I believe it's 2012, we created tobacco-free environment policy, it was updated, and there were already trends, and we knew about e-cigarettes, so we've already have that in our policy. We're also providing training, we're enhancing health education curriculum lessons with the latest information. The superintendent sent a letter home to parents about this just recently. We're updating a resource kit for schools. We're working with the Health Commission to curate cessation classes. We were distributing posters and materials to schools, and we're working with students to create PSAs. So it's a pretty comprehensive bit of work. We just started this level of work in September, and we'll be bringing that policy update to you as soon as we can get it finalized.
Well, thank you again, Ms. Carter. That's very helpful. And we'll ask the superintendent to include that in one of her future superintendent's reports when she has that, when you have that data ready, excuse me. So before I open it up to members for questions and discussion, I do just want to remind folks, I appreciate you pointing out at the outset, this is data that's from the school year 1718. And so, keeping that in mind as we ask questions, I stopped for a moment when you said there wasn't much change in one of your slides with respect to the way that we've deployed innovation in food and nutrition. You know, because when we're thinking back, in 17 and 18, we only, and if you look on one of these slides, we only had three pilots for the, pilot schools for the My Way Cafe at the time, and we hadn't yet achieved all the expansive work that we've done on breakfast after the bell, and making sure that not only is it provided in every school after the bell, but it's provided close to the student's classroom. So, you know, that's just one example that I think, you know, helps us keep in mind that we've done a great deal of work since that time to continue along this path to improve access. So with that, I'll open it up to members for questions and discussion. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you very much for the report. With that in mind, I was looking at the key findings that you gave us, particularly on the executive summary, and was, you know, was thrilled to see the successes, but really wondering about the challenges. And the question would be, how far have we come with these challenges in the last school year? Are there things that are persistently not moving forward? And then, how do you hold schools accountable for making critical changes? And who is responsible for urging, demanding, you know, schools to make these changes? And are people held accountable if things that are critical don't happen?
Right. So I'll take the first part of your question first, which is, have we seen in the areas of recommendation, if I, repeating back, have we seen changes in those areas that would be showing some progress? So, really, in health education, not much progress. As I said, we reported out, sexual health education is something that we've been, as a topic, a component of comprehensive health, to make some strides in, and we continue to do that. But comprehensive health education, really, including nutrition, including the stress reduction and the mental health, and all those, that is the part that is not been really showing a lot of improvement. In physical education, as I said, we have in grades K to 8 a very good implementation of the policy. It's at the high school level that we continue to struggle. And this year, I can say, I will give you the latest on what I can tell you about physical education for this year. So, 80, and I actually should say, these numbers are from last year, because it's our most recent, it's the 1819 data, and we're still collecting for this year. But 82% of all schools were staffed to meet or exceed PE policy, and that really was all schools. Not all schools, however, were staffed to provide all students with PE. 60% are staffed or approaching meeting policy in high schools. So still, we were 50- So still, we were 58% in 17, 18, and then 60% in, so it was a slight increase. Right now, 50% of high school students are currently enrolled in PE. So we're sup, we would want to see that be increased. I will tell you a really bright spot, though. In 2009, we had 92 physical education teachers in the district, and I was fortunate enough to be here at that time, and right now, we have 149 PE teachers in 2019. So overarching, looking at the district, we continue to make progress. We need just to focus on high school, and I think we can make, it's an achievable goal with numbers of staff, but facilities and scheduling are some of the things that we see that need, like we had said, need to come over, to overcome. I don't, I think you know a lot about the changes that have been happening in facilities overall to improve, and there are BPS plans, but I think we need to keep that pressure. In social-emotional learning, that is something we continue to make. We're doing more trainings, we're supporting more schools. So I anticipate when, in this spring, we repeat the, one of the major surveys that inform this, that we're going to see much better numbers. But again, what we really need is more capacity to support that development of teachers around social-emotional learning. We're not where we need to be. So your other questions were around accountability. I think that, I'm going to take a sip of water on that one. I've noticed when the harder questions come, I have a harder time getting my, I need another drink of water. I, you know, we are working with academic superintendents who are the ones who really, we're the, we're the school capacity builders, and we continue to provide support and share the policy, but we really need to continue to work with academic superintendents so that they understand the pro, what's happening at schools. One thing we did was, probably just a couple of years ago, Marika, started a new piece where we created a wellness profile for every school, and we give them at the beginning of year, of the year, when they're writing their quality school plan, this really nice two-page, pretty quick, short summary of where they're at on some of these policy areas. And I actually think that's why the wellness action plans have gotten better, smarter goals, and, you know, so I think giving, you have to give feedback to people, right? And so I think that's an important thing that we can continue to work on.
Are there schools that have persistently not participated or grown their issues? I mean, we're always talking about the opportunity gaps that exist in trying to close them, but sometimes our lack of implementation of our own policies continue to allow them to fester so.
Yep.
You know, are there schools that you're zeroing in on that you really would love to see a different kind of movement or urgency of movement to make things, to improve?
That's, that's a really good question. I think we could do more data analysis on that, you know, especially over time, looking at schools specifically, because this, we're looking at the, at the district level and not honing in on maybe the correlation between different schools and other things that we know about those schools. So I think that's a really good suggestion and hopefully something we could work with ODA on over time.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Ms. Reyes?
Yes, okay. So first, I would like to shout out the District Wellness Council for always reaching out to BSAC and being one of the groups that gives students a full vote in decision-making. Fabulous, we're very grateful. And I would also like to inform the committee that BSAC has updated our Student Rights website to reflect some of the information in this presentation. So we recently added information about the expectant and parenting student policy, the condom accessibility policy, and the menstrual products accessibility program.
Great.
Excellent.
Thank you. That is fabulous.
Isn't that awesome?
And then, I have a couple of different questions. First, and I'm looking at the executive summary, I was wondering if, I see that one of the challenges in terms of cultural proficiency is that there's low family and student engagement on school wellness councils, and I'm wondering if there's a way... Well, first, I'm wondering about the structure of those and sort of like what the training and support is around them, and do these schools, the schools that, you know, have maybe the lowest engagement, do they have stronger school site councils or parent councils, and how could we sort of bring those together to maybe balance that out? Like even if that means making the school wellness council a subcommittee of the school site council or something like that, sort of integrating that into the bigger...
That's great. Marika, do you want to?
Yeah, we, we have a school wellness support coordinator at the central office that has been working to increase the capacity of the, of the wellness councils so that they're, they operate in kind of a more collaborative and open way, and that includes thinking about some of the key components of how they structure their meeting, what time, whether there's different supports for all the stakeholders to be, to be present and to have a voice in the, in the conversation. But it, it still, it still remains a struggle for, I think, for the people who are tasked with the leadership of the council to, to engage with, with families. But I think your point of, some of the schools that I can think of who have been successful do have a component of connecting with the school site council.
Yeah, and I would say, you know, we have parent reps to the District Wellness Council, and so citywide parent council nominates somebody to be on the District Wellness Council, and I, I think maybe working closely, more closely with them, they could help us think through your suggestion, maybe a little bit about how that could be systemically encouraged for those connections to happen at the school level. So I love that idea. That's great.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I'm also, so now thinking about the comprehensive physical activity and physical education, I think it's really fantastic that schools are partnering with community organizations. That's great. And I'm wondering sort of if there's a certain organization that's maybe more popular or how that pairing happens and how we can make it, I don't know, maybe more community organizations or making it so that schools have stronger connections with these organizations?
So there's a couple of ways that that happens, or that we're, you know, there's the BPS portal, that, a partnership portal where partners register, and they get to explain the programming that they have at their, through their organization, and then that should allow, they, that should allow schools to be able to go onto that website and see and sort by category of partners, which is a way that they can help. When it comes to physical activity, though, we also have a physical activity collaborative that we've started with the Boston Foundation because they actually fund a large number of physical activity partners that are some of the biggest in the district. And we looked at the equity, we tried to look at mapping across the district equity of partnerships because we started to notice where there were schools that had one physical activity partner, they might have two or three of these big ones, as, and then we'd find some schools that didn't have any. So acknowledging that there's not a good opportunity in every school for those partners is the first step, but trying to be more strategic about encouraging our partners to go to the schools that don't have any. And that's what we thought the collaborative would do, and definitely the folks that are on it, it's, it's about 12 partners that are with us, and they look to us for suggestions and help on recruiting schools, and so we hope over time that will be another element.
Thank you. And, I think those are all of my questions. Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge that we had the BSAC, the new BSAC reps were at our District Wellness Council meeting, the first one, this past Monday, and we shared the vaping information with them, and it was so wonderful to have a student voice be the first voice in the room when we were talking about the vaping. And the one thing that they shared is, they said, so this is important, we should be talking about vaping, but, but you do know that marijuana is the major problem. And, and of course, you can vape marijuana, but they wanted, I, I thought it was really excellent to have their voice there, and, you know, we were able to acknowledge that it's about 25% of students that say that they have tried marijuana in the last eight. So again, having a student voice in the room with a group of adults really, really matters, so that's great.
Yes, put them together.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Before we go to Dr. Coleman, I just also wanted to note, Ms. Robinson has agreed earlier this year to serve as the committee's representative on the District Wellness Council, so I neglected to mention that earlier, and thank you once again for helping out.
Thank you very much. We look forward to talking.
Dr. Coleman?
Great, thank you very, very much. This is wonderful. I'm, I'm part of the people who believe that the next step in school improvement is this work, that this is going to be what's going to help us close the gaps and drive us forward in a way that I think we've made, a comprehensive in teaching and learning, this is the piece that's going to drive us forward. So I, so I want to actually follow up on Mrs. Robinson's conversation about how you manage this relationship between central office work and school autonomies in terms of driving, you know, moving this ball forward. In particular, because I don't, have no interest in shaming schools at all, but we do have a tier system, and I would really, I'm wondering what we know about the relationship between success in implementing a cell well program in a school and their performance based on their tier level, and whether there's any relationship between our actual academic outcomes and whatever percentage of cell wellness they may have. I don't know if you know that often, I don't, I'm sure you don't have the top, but I want to encourage us to think about that question as we start thinking about this relationship, but how, how can we build compliance with what you know works versus allowing schools to make autonomous decisions about what they think they need?
Right. I know, I agree, and I think there's some interesting questions there, and, you know, we, we don't have that data, but we would love to work on that. And I, I do, we give, we give wellness awards, we've been giving wellness awards in each part of this policy for the last 11 years. So I would even think that looking across those schools that have gotten the wellness awards, just to sort of look at how their other data sets look, might be sort of interesting. And so it might be a small way to get at what you're talking about, so.
And I'd like to go a step further than, as we've developed the school quality framework, there's this area of, of quality, of what parents or families are looking for in a school, that we have a hard time kind of developing, both at a qualitative and formative, but also at a quantitative metric. And so I would love to engage you in the conversation, the school quality group, around what type of, how we can build this information into the school quality so parents can say, I'm choosing a school that has these, access to this information, has PE, has a cell well program, and that that's part of what I'm choosing it for, which we may well be, independent of their academic performance, but that, I would love to know that.
Great, we'd be happy to engage in that conversation. That would be excellent.
And then, following up, this, this, a small detail, it'd be nice to have the information on, on vaping broken by, down by vaping nicotine and vaping marijuana, because I'm hearing that those health, those health comes, outcomes for vaping marijuana are significant and scary.
Just to kind of step in on that, in that point with the YRBS data, at, at this point, the way that they ask the vaping question, it falls under tobacco use, and they don't make that distinction, but it's, it is something, feedback that we want to give to the CDC to talk about, how can we start pulling that apart so we understand it a little more? There's, there are other data sources that, that do do that, but they don't provide the data on a district level, it's just a national measure.
I suspect as we're hearing the information coming in, the CDC will get on this very quickly.
Yes.
Again, thank you very much for the work. This is very important, and we want to be, I want to be very supportive going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Could you remind us briefly, what does YRBS stand for?
Sorry, yes, I apologize. Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Okay, thank you.
Every state gives it.
Very good. Dr. Rivera?
I just have two, two questions. When is, you know, just sharing a personal story as a parent, is that my son was a fifth grader, and the only time he received sexual health education was the last week of school. And that was just really unacceptable. And so I'm just curious, you know, why, you know, again, going to this accountability issue, you know, where's, you know, is it the principal, is it that they don't have a health educator, like, what is actually the main barrier for not offering sexual health education?
The, the main barrier is staffing, so licensed health education teachers in middle and high school, and then the second would be a place in the schedule, if you will, and depending, you said a fifth grader, is that right? So in fifth grade, we wouldn't necessarily think they were having a standalone class, but it would be that at a, at a given frequency, you would be doing health education lessons. And so there, a school could just have in their schedule that once a week, or once every other week, whatever, that they would offer health education. So that's just not probably happening. The other would be training, of course. So in fifth grade, because it, we wouldn't, we don't require a health education teacher to be teaching health education or sexual health education in, I mean, a licensed teacher, just, we would be training their fifth-grade teachers. So possibly, if the teachers weren't receiving the proper training, which we do really extensive training on sexual health, for non-licensed or licensed teachers, they might not have yet had an opportunity to go to training.
Okay, thank you. And I was just curious about the, the vaping, like the prevention, there's been some school districts that have installed sensors in bathrooms, and then that's led to like high suspension rates, but you had something about having alternatives to suspensions. So one is, yeah, what are we doing around prevention? I'm sure we're not buying those sensors, and we don't have probably those in the bathrooms, but what are we doing when a student is, is caught vaping? You know, you said alternative to suspensions, what do you mean by that?
So first of all, we definitely want to take the approach that we're trying to support and educate and not suspend. And in the, the current implementation guidelines of the policy, it gives ideas of other alternatives besides suspension, and on the first and the second occurrence, we're suggesting some other measures, and it wouldn't be till the third that we say maybe suspension. And I will say that was one of the biggest points of conversation at our District Wellness Council about whether we should be saying that at all as an option. So I think that's for further when we come back and talk about it, but what would, what are some of the alternatives could be, you know, it might be just talking to a counselor at the school about it, it could be having to do some work around reading some information about the, the negative impact of smoking in an after-school setting, it could be getting a referral to a cessation program. We also have a, a program at Succeed Boston where students can go without being officially suspended, but they can spend time with someone who's licensed to talk about and support students around substance use of many kinds, and they could go there for a day. So those are some of the, the things that, that, you know, we've helped schools do in the past.
Thank you for your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you for all your great work, and there's so many, you, you touched so many different topics that are important to our students, and I just want to touch on just a couple of them quickly. Like all my fellow members, I'm very concerned about the vaping issue, and I would posit that those numbers are extremely low. I bet you part of us how the question is phrased, but you talk to school leaders, they're saying much different data, particularly among high school students. I'll also say that up until recently, with the way Juul was marketing, you know, literally putting stuff in SpongeBob SquarePants marketing, I mean, disgusting what they were doing, and marketing to middle students, let alone high school students, and, you know, I, I had conversations with two college students trying to get them to... conversations with two college students, trying to get them to quit, and was told that it's hip, and it's cool, and it's safe, and I didn't know what I was talking about, then one of their friends ended up on a respirator. And one quit like that, and the other came to the hard knowledge that in fact, he's addicted, so, and is struggling now, trying to break it. So, it's amazing how the scared straight approach works, at least for those two, you will figure out what works in messaging to our students, but I want to ask you about a couple of other topics, somewhat akin to this, do you think opioids are a problem in our district?
For our students?
For our students and their families.
Well, I think their families is something that, you know, at a city level, we see the impact there. I would come, take, go back to the data that I have, and for high schools, the opioid, the reported opioid use is very low, and, Rick, maybe you can just see if you can find the exact number, but it's very low, and it has been for quite a while in the district, so that's, you know, again, based on a survey, and I think you always should triangulate other data, so here, so have never used, so our data around substance use is pretty, so ninety-nine percent of students report never using heroin. Ninety-one percent, now this is a little, ninety-one percent report never using prescription pain medication without a prescription. That is not that, I mean, if you look at the inverse, that means there's nine percent of students that have used prescription pain medication without a prescription. So, we don't know whether that's an opioid prescription, but that's obviously, we know a precursor to the use of opioids, so, again, that's, this is, you know, where we're at in 2017, I will tell you, long-term trends in BPS, looking back, we have data all the way back to 1993, it's lower than, you know, what you obviously are sensing in more of an adult setting.
I bet you the question would be a little different if you or anyone in your family. I think people at this point, it's getting pretty rare to meet someone who hasn't had a family member or a friend's family member impacted by this.
Absolutely, yeah, no, the family, I think the fam, you're right, if we asked a question about a family member impacted, which is a great suggestion, as we look to the next time around, if we are able to switch a question for something like that.
And I bring it up in the context of our students' mental health, and the trauma that they face, because I'm also interested if you think suicide and bullying is issues in our, for our students.
Mr. O'Neil.
I'm sorry, do you think thoughts of suicide and/or bullying issues are an issue for our students?
So...
Including cyberbullying?
So, the, definitely, you know, around the mental health piece, we do see, that is an area of concern, and we have a number of questions where we ask, seriously considered attempting suicide, did something to purposely hurt themselves without warning, so there's a whole series of questions, and when you look across all of those, we see increases in some of the answers to those questions, and the actual attempts of suicide, though, are not at a, not increasing in 2017, but all the indicators around depression and suicidality are generally not in the direction that you want.
And cyberbullying, and particularly cyberbullying?
Oh, and the bullying, um, do, do we have that?
Oh, yeah, electronically bullied.
So, we have electronically bullied, a nine-two, nine-point-two percent state, reported being electronically bullied, we didn't see a lot of discrepancy along other disparities, except for when we compared gay, lesbian, and bisexual to heterosexual, and there you can see sixteen-point-eight percent of LGBT students reporting that they were cyberbullied.
Is this the type of thing that's now regularly, I assume it is, but I want to ask, is this regularly on the radar screen now of our school psychologists, our counselors?
Which, the bullying, the cyberbullying?
Bullying, the thoughts of suicide, opioids in the family, I mean, these are issues that are all making it really hard to be a kid right now.
Yes, it is, and, and yes, I do, our psychologists are definitely very aware, because they're seeing it in the individual students, and we definitely are briefing them on the overarching data that we have, and I think it's really important to recognize that addressing some of these things, we really need to look at the stresses of students, and some of the prevention measures that we're talking about in our recommendations, because social emotional, social emotional development, health education, physical education, other forms of physical activity, we really have to look at the foundational pieces that we're doing for all students, but of course, then we need to have the services and supports for students that are really at the highest risk or are already presenting with some of these issues.
As I've said many times before, almost everything you're touching on here are things that are required to get our students to be in a position to learn. If any of those boxes aren't checked, they're not in a position to learn, anything from food to their physical, emotional health, mental health, et cetera, so, thank you for all that you do, I will pass on, I'll finish with one point, I, you know, like everyone was concerned about marijuana expanding in Massachusetts, and, you know, they're going to be opening in Boston centers, and was recently an event that the governor, former governor of Colorado and former Denver mayor, Hickenlooper spoke at, and he said he was opposed to it at first for three reasons, one of which was he was concerned about marijuana use going up among youth, and he said for the three reasons that he was concerned about, none of those actually happened. He said ironically, the growth, the group that saw the highest increase in marijuana use was senior citizens, aged baby boomers, I guess, but...
My people?
It will be interesting, it'll be interesting to see if that's going to be...
Over time, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if it's going to be an issue for our youth, and obviously, I hope that it isn't, and I'm sure that's something you're watching, but I was surprised to hear that they were very concerned about that, and their experience in Colorado was that it was not an issue that they expected it to be. I just passed it along.
I think, yeah, we, we'll have to watch the trends here, we did see, I think, maybe an initial uptick after some of the changes to laws in Massachusetts, but it's, it's kind of, it's started to level out a bit, and I don't, you know, I think we'll have to watch and look at that, so.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
I also just wanted to say, in response to some of the things that I'm hearing as well, this is why we think health education is one of the most important recommendations that the council brings, because substance use prevention, depression, suicidality, all of these things are things that are covered in comprehensive, skills-based health education. So, health education, that's not just about kind of teaching knowledge about specific topics, but actually giving kids the skills and knowledge to make healthy decisions, to have conversations within their family, with their friends, and be able to kind of face some of these major issues that they're dealing with in their communities as they come along.
Thank you, and I will also lastly say, right along the lines of what you were talking about, is so many of our students act as caregivers themselves to their younger siblings, and in many cases, you know, can't work jobs or anything, because they're going home to help take care of their siblings, which we learned a lot about the school start time change policy that we had talked about. I had a conversation the other day with Professor Ron Ferguson, who has helped us a lot in achievement gap, and has the Boston Basics Program, trying to teach young parents about what to do with zero to three, and he and I were talking about, our students should also know about that, because so many of them do act as caregivers to their younger siblings, so I just pass that along for what it's worth, I'm sure you're aware of that program.
No, I, I, thank you for sharing that, and I do agree, I mean, these kinds of things are the things, we're preparing our students to someday become parents, and the skills that they're developing now are going to be really important, whether they're taking care of youth now, or becoming parents themselves someday, and so the foundational skills that we're talking about feel really, really important, and more forward-thinking than when there is an emerging issue, for like, right now, it's vaping, but it's, it's getting ahead of that with the skills that we teach them in health education, and starting in kindergarten, and going all the way up, so that it's, it's not coming maybe after they've made some choices, so.
Thank you.
I can tell you, as I talk to youth around my engagement, they're also saying they want more explicit courses and training on these things like sexual health, they want more courses around life decisions, financial literacy, you know, parenting, yeah, all of that stuff, so I, you know, Evelyn probably can talk to it more, but that's what they tell me.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Mr. Tron.
Good evening, thank you for the report. Looking at the last slide that you have, it's particularly troubling to me that the GLB students population, the percentage are very, very high in all these negative health behavior. The question I have, given the fact that, just echoing Mr. O'Neil's concern regarding bullying, I believe that's one of the problem, one of the problems that the GLB students also are experiencing. Two parts to my question, the first part is, given that atrocious percentage of GLB students exhibiting negative health behavior, are you looking at other best practices around the country to help them? If it is continuing with this trend, I think it's pretty negative for our school system. The second part I have is, given the fact that there is a so-called restorative justice system within the Boston Public School, how well does that work? How well does that work so far affecting these GLB students? So, I would like to have some information, some data regarding these kind of, you know, these kind of issues. Thank you.
Can you, the last question, just so I make sure, can you say the last question?
Restorative justice, restorative, I can respond.
Oh, restored, oh, God, restored, okay.
It's interesting that you bring that up, Mr. Tron, because today I was just having a conversation with Becky Schuster in our equity office, and we're talking about budget and budget investments, and she actually brought to me that because there's been an uptick in these kinds of concerns, she is recommending a GLBT specialist be hired in her office, who can do training, and do some more of the intervention work, and so I'm absolutely going to support that, so I just wanted you to know that, and then I also met with Sam DePina, who's over our student support, and works with our SAAS coordinators, and so he's looking, and works with the restorative justice piece, and so he's looking at investments on the restorative justice side, because we don't have enough coaches and trainers to go out and do the restorative justice, so I think in the budget, you'll see some of these additional pieces of recommendations that the team is bringing forth as investments in wellness, so it's really exciting that the questions we're getting here off of the report are already informing the team in how we can better invest and provide additional training and support to schools, so that the policies are implemented well.
Thank you.
That's very exciting, and great news, I will just say, at this time, we have been supporting some best practices around the LGBTQ work in a number of different ways, and by collaborating across departments. The equity department works closely with the health and wellness department, and we also have a lot of community partners that are, been supporting us on developing the capacity of teachers in this, in the district. We had a grant, we still have a grant from the Centers for Disease Control, that's, has many different elements of it, but one of it is to create safe and supportive environments for all students, but especially for LGBT students, and so we get a lot of training and support from the CDC on this. Some of the things that we're doing include, we have an Out for Safe School badge campaign, where we're training staff at schools, so that they can be allies, and we call it a badge campaign, because it's actual, a badge that clips to the lanyard that a lot of staff wear. We've already done, I think I just heard from our, an update today, we have already over a hundred staff we've trained this year on that, we're also, we do have some contractual time through that grant to support the development and the, sort of either maintaining or improving GSAs, the Gay-Straight Alliances. In the past, we focused at high schools, we're trying to move that down into elementary schools, and the equity office has done through grants, an enormous amount, but we really do need a full-time person, they train on a program called the Welcoming Schools, I think it's the Welcoming Schools Curriculum, and they've trained a number of all schools on that program, and then what we used to have, we used to have someone that had a lot of skill in the district, who would help with transitioning students, she would, transgender students that were in transition, she would go out and support the schools, and the students, and the families, that was a piece of her role, that is something that I think Becky is advocating for within the position that she's talking to you about, and she and I have been very much in line with trying to hope that there would be an investment in that, so it's great news.
I also, I also wanted to just mention that when we reviewed the data too, we were surprised not to see a specific mention of transgender students in the data, and so hopefully, we'll be able to address that by adding questions with, that would address that community.
Yeah, we, we have for, just to, because I think it is sometimes confusing for people when they see our YRBS data, that the other letters are not attached to the end of the LGB, and we do have a question on our, our YRBS survey to identify, for kids to identify as transgender, and in our report for high school, we have that one percent of students identify as transgender, and right now, because of the sample size, we don't have enough power to then be able to kind of cut up the data and be able to look at transgender students as a subgroup, so right now, we're only able to look at students that identify as gay, lesbian, or bisexual, but in the, in future years to come, we may be able to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tron. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your report, and thank you for staying, I know you're sick, I hope you feel better.
I'm so happy to be here. It's fine.
So, I just want to echo the comments made before, that I think this is so central to the work that we do for the health of our students and our families, so I just wanted to say that I really think that these goals are spot-on, so I really think the wellness committee is on the right track, when we look at the comprehensive health education, if we look at sex education, and we see that STDs are highest among teenagers, and continues to increase, when we look at HPV and opioid abuse, as well as Mr. O'Neil was talking about, and the physical education piece, to me, is like a no-brainer, and we should have PE for all students, we know that exercise, being outside, combats depression, anxiety, et cetera, and I do want to say that, I don't know what the policy is, but I think we should abolish using, taking away recess as a punishment, and I don't know what, if we can as a body make this decision, because I think that's a really unfair, usually, I was a kid that was always in trouble, and if I didn't get to go outside, it was, it was going to be more trouble, so I just think...
We've heard that before.
If I can interject there, you know, this is something that the superintendent and I have been talking about during this presentation, because as you point out, you know, there was twenty-three percent of schools that reported using the withholding of recess as some form of punishment, and, you know, we've been such a progressive district in the way in which we've employed our code of conduct, you know, it's, in essence, I think you're saying the same thing, a no-brainer, that we would add that as a prohibition, and the superintendent has already spoken to her people about putting that into the circular for the time being.
Right.
to, uh, to direct that and we'll make that update.
It's actually, it's actually in the circular, in the implementation guidelines, not in the policy, I believe, um, without having, but I'm pretty sure. But we also know that, um, we need to line it up with our code of conduct. Because, um, I don't know that it's called out there, that that wouldn't be an acceptable alternative to suspension. And people might look there. So that could be a good, uh, addition to the circular on code of conduct that could help us before we brought this back to you eventually for another update with that as a policy.
Well, that's a very easy add for us.
I've actually given it to Sam DePina and asked him to update it and he does the conduct stuff, the work, so we'll.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, that's okay. Thank you for interrupting me. I'm glad, check. We've never done anything. That's wonderful. And, um, so again, I think.
And we'll also follow up with who the twenty-three percent are. So I asked Sam to contact you, Jill, to find out who the twenty-three percent are.
Because I know we, we focus so much on like the recess piece when you're younger and PE, but it is really important for high school students to also get, um, PE. And then ob, it's so obvious, I, it's not, you know, rocket science, the social emotional learning, starting very young. You know, you pointed out the Boston Basics, which I think is great. But when we look at some of the pieces around the bullying, which, um, in talking to students and in talking to teachers, this is, um, something that, I know we have a policy, but what I hear over and over again, especially from teachers, is that there is a policy, but they, there's no implementation, there's no consequences. And so I, I'm just saying that, I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm saying hearsay. So I, I have an experience, I don't work in the district, but just the experience I have with students leads me to believe that the bullying is much higher than these statistics and probably not reported. And so I just wonder if that's an area to concentrate on in terms of helping, um, school staff to be able to do something about, um, the bullying piece because that is very concerning. Um, and then, um, the, what I thought was really interesting is, um, the CP trainings. And then I saw, you know, the CP goals were high for schools. Um, and then, um, healthy school environment goals and safe and supportive goals. And I know you weren't at the last presentation, but it just was interesting to me because if we go to the last presentation on Equity and we saw, um, such a large percentage of students that, um, were having, um, bias-based conduct. And so I just, it seems like a big disconnect when I look at the training of CP and central staff. So then how does that translate to young people? So I guess maybe it's going back to your point earlier of number one. If we had a comprehensive health education, then maybe those conversations are taking place. Because the two, if our, if our staff are getting it, but then our students aren't, it just, it's, I just think it's a huge, um, disconnect. And so I don't know, taking a deeper look into that, uh, maybe again, working, I'm sure you work closely with Equity. And then for the, um, depression piece, um, I would, I, I see that you've bro, broken out, um, the GLTQ students and, um, the Latino students on here for, um, attempted suicide. And I was surprised in some of the other categories that you don't have percentages for some of the other populations.
We do, we do.
Because I know for suicide ideation, Latinos nationally have the highest, uh, number unfortunately. And so my reason for saying those two things is, as we're looking at, um, GLTQ supports, I, I wonder if it's also, um, working with Latino students and not having staff that is reflective of the culture and language to be able to, because it is a huge issue. And then I know bathrooms is not on your list and it's not your responsibility, but I just want to say, just because I hear from students all the time, that, you know, bathrooms are not the greatest. And so I, I, I just say this, I know as you work across, it's everyone's responsibility, but I do feel like that is part of health. It is a representation, a reflection of how we feel about our students. And I would be remiss if I did not bring that back after the many complaints that I have heard about. But I want to just really support you because I think this work is so, so, so important. And these goals are just spot-on. And I really, uh, support you, support all of us in making these things happen. Because I do think they make a huge difference for our young people. The academic piece is important, but really for me, these are like the most important things that we need to have young people that are happy and productive for the future and well-being of our entire society. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Well, you've heard a lot of, uh, diverse opinions tonight, but you've had, you've given us a, a broad base of information to react to. And so I, I don't think I need to ta, uh, take a lot more time tonight to parse over the information. And I'm glad that we've been able to, um, make a few, uh, on-the-spot changes, uh, both with respect to, um, the way in which we treat, you know, certain disciplinary actions, as well as thinking about how we recognize our, our gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender community more broadly. I, you know, all I can do in, uh, in closing is just say that I echo the, you know, the comments of my, uh, my colleagues in that, you know, this is work, this is a work that's so important to, um, you know, the, the culture and the, the climate within a school and how kids feel supported. And, you know, just the same as we talk about, um, kids having enough food to eat, uh, you know, clean clothing, getting to school on time and safely, you know, feeling safe mentally and, you know, in their own skin and in their own, wherever they find themselves in their environment, puts them in the right frame of mind to learn and then to be ready to learn and go on to better college and careers. And, uh, so this work is, you know, as, uh, Dr. Coleman has pointed out, you know, the, I, I really think the difference-maker for a lot of the kids in it, that are in our system and, um, will really help to help, um, continue, uh, the improvement of our schools across the board. So thank you for that work. We, we look forward to continuing to support that work, uh, going forward. And we'll, uh, we'll look forward to the quali, is it, it'll be qualitative next year.
Qualitative, that's right. We've heard some stories of exciting, good work at schools and how they're overcoming some of the barriers that other schools can learn from. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent.
I also want to say that we won't have to wait annually for the report because this will be integral into the recommendations around the strategic planning that we'll be bringing you. And so as I give you updates on strategic plan, you'll be seeing data on a regular basis around some of these goals that will be in the strategic plan.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Well, thank you once again. And please, uh, pass along our thanks to your colleagues on the Wellness Council as well.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ms. Sullivan, we'll move on to public comment and reports.
Thank you. We have no speakers for public comment and report.
Members, new business. Well, hearing none. Uh, that concludes our business for the evening. Our next school committee meeting will take place next Wednesday, November sixth at six PM. Uh, we also have, uh, a open-to-the-public retreat scheduled for the following Wednesday, November thirteenth, which will begin at five-thirty in this chamber. If there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Sounds like unanimous consent? Good night, all.